Okay, Madam Chair, it looks like the recording is in progress.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Town Council meeting for Monday, August tenth, two thousand and twenty. Before we get started on our actual meeting, we have a public hearing this evening concerning tax abatement outside the enterprise zone. And Mike, I believe I'm going to let you host this. Is that correct?
Uh, not necessarily, but I can turn it to Mr. Lou Perillo.
May I do that?
Very good. Let me just start by saying the legal notice, Madam Chair, and then I'll turn it over to Lou, notice here by giving the Town Council to the town's place and a little public hearing on Monday, August tenth, two thousand and twenty, at seven P. M. on tax abatements manufacturing outside the enterprise zone. And Mr. Perillo will now take over.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good evening, Lou.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Chair. My name is Lou Perillo. I'm the Town of Southern Economic Development Director. And for the proceedings, public hearing, we'd like to enact a new ordinance as far as tax abatements go, and it will be a tax abatement outside of the enterprise zone for manufacturers. The specific tax abatement applies to a particular manufacturing base, the standard industrial classification code two thousand through three nine nine nine. This abatement is very similar to what we offer in the enterprise zone, except it's outside the enterprise zone in a five-year forty percent abatement for real and personal property. What it does is it offers parity for existing manufacturers or new manufacturers that want to come to Southington that can't locate anywhere in the enterprise zone for whatever reason. The program will expire July first of two thousand and twenty-two, and only one applicants are awarded only one program that the Town of Southington offers. And if there's any questions or anything, I'd be glad to respond.
And I just wanted to ask a quick question, then we'll open it up for the council. So, Lou, this is a program that would benefit those that are not able to get within the enterprise zone, but do want to make a sizable investment in Southington. Is that correct?
That's correct. A long time ago, several years ago, we actually had this abatement in place. We had two existing manufacturers in Fansville that were considering putting on additions to their building. But they felt that, you know, they already had an investment that was not within the enterprise zone, and yet the town supports fifty percent of the abatement. So we came up with this abatement for parity. They did not end up taking advantage of the program, but we did have a manufacturer that did, and it proved very successful. So that's why we have interest again in that same manufacturer, so we're bringing it before the council. We also allow these to sunset, just to make sure that, you know, there's measurable success with the abatements we offer.
Great. Let me open it up to the council. Anybody have any questions? Lou, or the...
Hi.
Okay, who... Somebody raise your hand.
Tom Lombardi?
Yes, Tom, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Lou, and thank you for the description on the abatement. Just to clarify, though, this is not only for new businesses moving in. So are the existing businesses that are in place able to apply for this as well, or is this only for new applications and new activities?
To clarify, it's for any business, whether they're existing or not, for new, personal, and real property improvements.
Right, right.
So existing company could take advantage of it, or a new company coming into town. But, for example, we always tax the land that underlies, but if someone puts up a new building and then brings in equipment, they would get an abatement of forty percent off the taxes for the first five years on both of those. So it could be, we would consider an applicant to be new if they bring up anything new within the town.
Right.
Outside the enterprise zone, as long as they're a manufacturer within that standard industrial classification code.
Good.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair?
Yes, wow.
Thank you. Lou, just a quick question. So it says the applicants are allowed to be awarded only one program. Is that forever, or is that like during, they get one program during that five-year period? And what if they came with another business, or something like that?
Another business would be considered another application, but we, sometimes the town has more than one abatement program in place, or will do, perform a function that we would consider a benefit to the applicant. So in the past, for an example, the town supported changing the industrial zone to business to support Target and Lowe's expansion. And we weighed the benefits to the town. There was over six million dollars of infrastructure improvement paid for by the developer. The developer, through Eversource, Yankee Gas at the time, brought over a gas line from West Cleveland Street, west to West Street, south all the way to Target and Lowe's. What that did was it allowed the Hartford Insurance Buildings, the former Hartford Insurance Buildings, to hook up to gas. That was about a million dollars a mile. So by changing the zone, that was about a ten million dollar benefit to the Town of Southington at no cost. What we did was we did not give a benefit for the enterprise zone to the retail aspect of it, and we actually have petitioned the state to remove that from the zone, so the developer could not get that. The developer felt that the retail development at that time supported it. So what we suggested was you don't qualify because you have one program, and that one program was us supporting the zone change.
Okay, so you really look at the, at the new application. You really look at the applications. Okay.
Correct. At times, we've had more than one benefit, like a municipal infrastructure improvement, some of that repaired a road, or fixed or increased the size of a road. They wouldn't qualify for two abatements at that time.
Okay, great. Thanks, Lou.
Is there anybody else?
Madam Chair, I may?
Yes, of course.
The vice president of the strike committee at the July ninth meeting, and the strike committee solely supported a recommendation that the Town Council approved this abatement.
Very good. Does the chairman of the strike committee want to weigh in on it?
At the time, Madam Chair, later on in my thoughts, I will probably speak about it a little. I'm gonna keep you in suspense.
Thank you, Matt. Anyone on the phones? Is there anyone on computer, attending this virtually, that would like to speak about in the public hearing, whether it's before or against? Please signify by just letting us know. I think, Paul, what we want them to do is just speak and say you want to be next. Is that correct?
Correct. If there's anybody, Madam Chair, who is on their computers and can take themselves off of mute, please go ahead and take the phone up to you. If you're on the computer, if you want to speak during the public hearing. Ask the folks on the computer, then we'll go to the phone line.
And so let's do that now. If you want to speak, anybody, is there anyone who wishes to speak on this matter? Any for, anybody for or against? Paul, I don't hear anyone. Do you?
No, Madam Chair, I don't hear anything. Would you like to move to the phones?
Uh, yes, please move to the phones. Anyone on the phone who wishes to speak on this matter, please speak up. Paul is taking you off mute and...
Okay, Madam Chair. It looks like there's three calling folks. So if there's anybody who's on the phone that would like to speak on this public hearing, your phone is off of mute, please do so now.
Last call, anybody?
Okay, Madam Chair, doesn't sound like there's anybody on the phone, so I'll put them on mute again.
Okay, very well. Thank you so much, and thank you, everybody. I'm going to close the public hearing at this point, and we're going to begin our regular meeting. This evening, we'll start with our roll call. Roll call, we'll go to prayer, and we're going to have a moment of silence for two very important folks that we lost over the last two weeks. And so, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Michael Del Santos. Michael Del Santos.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Valerie DePacino.
Here.
William Davis.
Here.
Tom Lombardi.
Here.
James Marley.
Here.
Christopher Palmer Rice.
Here.
Christopher Pulis.
Here.
Walter Prinsky.
Here.
Victoria Trian.
Here. Thank you so much. And, Madam Clerk, would you read a prayer, and it will be followed by a moment of silence for Matt Florian, who, over a week ago, and Matt, of course, has been vital to Southington, and his heart was Southington, and we will miss him. He will not be replaceable. And we remember Matt tonight. And also, a giant of a man, we lost Ralph Mann just a while ago. I've taken the liberty to bring the flag down to half staff in honor of Ralph and of Matt, and that will be the case until tomorrow. And so, as after the clerk reads the prayer, we will also have a moment of silence to remember these two wonderful men.
Dear heaven and mother, we continue this evening, asking for your direction and guidance. Keep us focused tonight on what is best for Southington and our people in life.
Thank you, everyone. Let us stand for our flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Thank you, everyone. Item number two, minutes. We have two meetings that we have minutes for. Let's take the first one for July thirteenth minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from July thirteenth.
Okay. I just want to add one thing, and that is the minutes that we not have that initial petition that was verified and brought in. So I have taken the liberty of focus on Larry Nichols, our administrative assistant, and so that was intended to be with the minutes on the thirteenth. And so it is now that way. So I would just ask, Chris, could you just amend your motion to include the amended minutes, if that's all right?
Sure, no problem.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second. Second, Michael Del Santos.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any extensions? Okay, passed unanimously. Thank you. On July twenty-second, we had a special, a special meeting of the Town Council to discuss a resolution that would bring a message to heartbreak concerning the Accountability Act that was proposed. We all felt, and I want to thank my colleagues on the other side of the aisle this evening, it was a unanimous vote to support our local police department and ask for further time in reviewing this bill. That, of course, was not, was not recognized by the House, and it was passed against what we thought. But the fact that we all came together to stand together, I think, was extremely important, and I know it meant a great deal to our police officers and to members in our community. So having said that, may I have a motion on the special meeting for July twenty-second, please?
I'll make a motion to approve those as well.
Thank you.
I think...
Tom, second. Thank you. All those in favors, signify by saying aye.
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 Any extensions or opposition? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Councilperson's communication. I'd like to open it up, and if anyone has any communication, that we have been so clear in these last few days. And I'm sure people are going to be talking about that, and I just can't tell you how much I appreciate the council, people who have gotten really involved in fielding calls and opening up communication. Thank you, everybody. And I'm going to also thank the Town Manager and the staff a little later on, but I just want to say thank you. Let me open it up. Michael Del Santos, could you go ahead?
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you very much. I just wanted to extend a little bit what you said about the need for the special meeting that we have on the twenty-second. A little disappointed in our state legislation for not, for going ahead and approving the Accountability on Police bill that they passed. I think I made it pretty clear in my sentiments at the last meeting. I thought a better, better way to go about this is to have some accountability on crime. But I just wanted to put on the record that I'm disappointed. We have a primary vote tomorrow. We have an election coming up towards the end of this year. Get out and vote, folks. I honestly believe what our legislation did by passing this absolutely devastated our schools. And I will reiterate once again that I stand with the Southington Police. They, I've got their back, they've got our back. And that's it. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Mike. Is there anybody else who has some problematic communication? Paul, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a couple items, Madam Chair. First of all, I want to say a thank you and a shout out to all of those at the Southington High School who worked to make the graduation ceremony, or what it was. You know, having my eldest son involved in the, in one of the four ceremonies, I could say that Frank Tuckey and the entire Board of Ed team that worked tirelessly, and all the volunteers in the community that helped with that. I know that there's, there's been a lot of challenges throughout the process regarding coronavirus, you know, the state, and there's been so many different opinions coming from different directions on what should or shouldn't be included, how the ceremony should go, you know, is it one ceremony, four ceremonies? This thing's gone back and forth, and I think that given all of the things that were thrown at them, they did an outstanding job, and I think they did a really nice job ensuring that they kept tradition, but also, you know, adapted to the times, and it was really a nice closure for the students in the campus. So a great shout out to them for what they did. On the storm, I just wanted to say a few thank yous. First of all, to, you know, our teams, the Highway Department, for all the dedication and the fast responses that they've been working on over the last week or so with the storm. The transfer station being open, I want to say that, you know, I went on a number of trips to the transfer station last week, and a real special thank you to everybody who has worked within the town to support the storm. I just wanted to shout out, the couple days that I had gone personally, Mr. Brian Badgley from the Highway Department was there, and I wanted to just give him a special shout out because he was, he was managing the entire transfer station by himself, you know, and I think that, and I didn't ask why, but I suspect that it was to ensure that we had an excellent staff out trying to fix everything else around town. And that gentleman was directing traffic, ensuring people were flowing properly. He was in a vehicle, waving people, trying to push the brush aside, and I could tell you, he did a really nice job with the volume of people that were coming in there. So special thanks to Mr. Badgley. I think let Annette know as well. Just a few more, special thanks to the first responders, police, fire, ambulance, the highway department with the trees, the electrical companies that are out there bringing and restoring some sense of normality to everybody. And then, special thanks to Mark and Annette for dealing with me personally. Thanks for being willing to field all the emails as people were resiring, you know, and we were all trying to pass information along to them. I'm sure not just me, but all of you were doing the same. So just a thank you for your patience, and each and every one of those inquiries was met with open arms and dealt with in an appropriate manner. And I wanted to say thank you to both of you for that. And then the last thing, Madam Chair, you know, I think that there's a lot that went on with the storm, both with the, you know, within the community, within the state. And I think it might be good at some point in the future to maybe have a postmortem, where we can all get together and go, okay, you know, what were the things that went crazy? What could we learn from? You know, one thing that I think really worked well was the town and the police department posted on social media the listings of the things that were going on in town and the problem areas. And, you know, a lot of people, even though we were out of electricity, still had some, some way to check social media or get to find your social media, and check those and ensure that their street was put on that list. And I think that that's a, that's a really great tool for us for the future, and there's probably a lot of other good ideas as well. So it might be worth us, you know, having a brainstorming session on how we can continue to get better in moments of crisis like this during the future. Thank you, Madam.
So, you know, I was, I was at town's office, and I shared that also with Mark, and I'm sure we're going to do that. We're gonna get everybody at the table that had a part of that, and also the council, and see if there's things that we could have done better, things that worked. I mean, when you think about it, our police department was fielding calls from Bristol, and then the tree fell on Green Street, and then our nine-one-one had to go to check her. It was, it was like an incredible situation, and yet professionalism, our team was there. And I'm telling you, and even though sometimes you get frustrated because you don't know what's going on, and you don't have electricity, and you don't have lights, and whatever, still, it was, it was a time for everyone to really pull together. And I've had more than one or two people say to me, Paul, that they saw you pulling trees, cutting trees, loading pieces of lumber on your truck and getting rid of it. So I just wanted to say thank you to you publicly. So thank you so much. But we are gonna get together to do a little critique, find, figure out what's going on with all the professional staff and the members of the council, and we can kind of set up, I mean, I hope we never have to experience this kind of storm. I think the chief of police said this was the second most devastating storm that he's been with. And so we hope we never have to deal with, but we better have to know what we're doing when we're dealing. So thank you, Paul, so much. Is there anyone else with problematic communication?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Val.
So I just wanted to say a big thank you to the Public Works Department. I've been able to see some of the new tennis courts and the basketball courts at the parks. Everything just looks great. And it's so important for our parks to have these facilities that are updated and, you know, where residents can really take advantage of them. So just a great job by everybody. And the high school parking lot, too, you know, getting that done relatively quickly. And then just a reminder that the community conversations just from the Social Justice Coalition, one is Wednesday, this Wednesday, and then the third one is, I believe, next Wednesday, August nineteenth. So those are two, two conversations, you know, to keep in mind.
Very good.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Paul.
Thank you. And now, just a quick question. Can you just fill us in on the August twelfth meeting for the Social Justice Group? What time does that start, and how would people get on that?
Actually, Tom, we can go on the town website, and if it's there, they can register. It's from four to five o'clock.
Okay.
As long as they can register, they will get a, an email with the Zoom link.
Good. I will, I will be there. Thank you for reminding.
You're welcome.
So I just also, I think the Councilman, Sir Plinsky, and Councilwoman Apollo gave the appropriate thank you to all the different parties involved in the last couple, the last few days of things that have been going on. I just, I just wanted to give a quick thank you to the YMCA. They, you know, whenever, whenever anything happens in town, you can always count on the YMCA. I'm looking at the Town of Southington homepage right now, and it says YMCA showers available during power outage. So thank you again to the YMCA for doing something that they don't have to do. You know, they're a private organization, and they're, they're part of the community, and they always step up at times like this. So thank you again to everyone during the difficult times that we've had.
Yeah, thank you, Tom. Anyone else? Okay, that's great. I'm going, I have something I do want to share in a little bit, but I'm not gonna do it here. I'm gonna do it later on this evening. So special committees. Paul, you would bring us up to date on open space, please?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few updates on open space. We are continuing to work towards aggressive maintenance of the parcels, open space parcels. We've had activities recently at Grasky, also on Gunno Street property, which is a new hayfield that we're starting there. We are in the process of planning for hay in the upper field at Novix, and continue to look at the goats there. We're working on a way to ensure that the goats are corralled safely, but also in a way that doesn't affect anybody using the property. On the Novix, we did have, we ordered a new plaque because the last one had fallen off, so we're gonna, we put the plaque up for the pollinator garden, and there's gonna be some pruning going on there as well. Unfortunately, we discovered this morning that there was some vandalism on the booth zone where the plaque goes, so we have to work with the police department to ensure that a reporter's come there and ensure that that's corrected before we put the, before we put the new plaque up. We have a number of, there's a little bit of minor damage at the leaf facility with a tree that fell. Everybody's safe, and most of the structures are okay, and we're waiting for any final assessment there from Mark Ramsey, but we think it's manageable, and that's from the storm that just occurred. And then, of course, you know, we've got a number of properties in active discussion that we're, that we're pursuing, so I'm happy to say that, that there's, you know, a number of parcels that are active with respect to open space. So, you know, hopefully in the weeks and months ahead, we'll continue to have more information on that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Any questions of Paul concerning open space? Hearing done, let's move on to the Economic Strike Committee. Michael?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I do have a number of things to go over tonight. First and foremost, the Economic Development Team interviewed a bunch of marketing firms. We were, at our last meeting, we went to executive session and came out, and it was unanimous that we selected Rebel, who is here, Rebel Interactive is a company, it's local here in Southington. I'm gonna throw it over to Lou, maybe Lou could explain a little bit more about the company. But before I do, you know, we decided that the Economic Strike Committee to hire a marketing firm to help us market Southington. Our businesses need us now more than ever, and with this help, spending a few bucks now, the boost that comes with the development will come back to benefit us by a factor of ten. I firmly, firmly believe that. But we've, my old man always reminds us, you gotta spend money to make money, and we really need to market Southington of the total devastation that they went through with the COVID, and now with the storm, the past couple of weeks, I'm really feeling for our town businesses. So we've gotta do something to help them. So we've decided on to do. So Lou, can you maybe add a little bit more about Rebel Interactive?
Sure. Thank you very much. First, I'd like to thank the council and the council board for supporting this marketing initiative, because as you said, the businesses could really help it, and now couldn't be a better time. We had a number of marketing companies that applied. They all did a tremendous job. It was not an easy choice for the committee. We did interview three candidates, and Rebel did come out, the winner of the bid. We have two representatives from Rebel Interactive who are gonna play a brief video, and they will introduce themselves. It's Greg Shimer and Bryn Chindal. Am I online right now?
Hi, I'm here, yes. I'm afraid Bryn was not able to make it tonight, so we regret. But I did the opportunity to be able to show you this. I'm gonna share my screen right now, please. Is that okay? Okay. So while I'm teeing this up, by the way, you have a heck of a, excuse me, you have a heck of a background, Victoria. So I'm gonna go to the special site that we created called CSouthington.com. Right? That's a great thing where you can go and you can find someone else now. So we created this Southington video. Pardon me, actually, I don't think this is the only one. I apologize. We're gonna put the video on that one. We actually updated this video that we had done before. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, thank you. I wanna make sure that they're all seated and hear this at the same time.
Hey, Greg, we can't hear the sound.
Oh, no.
We're probably not going to be able to hear the sound streaming.
That's fine. That's fine. I appreciate that. Thank you. I'll stop sharing now the same bandwidth. So, by the way, uh, Lou has a copy of it, and again, he's, uh, welcome to show it to everybody. We did that, uh, again, just to show capabilities. It's also self-cashing. Um, you know, I was told to be very brief, uh, and so I will be. But, uh, let me just say really quick that the gentleman, uh, his name is Jesse, the, uh, who made that video for us very quickly, he's an employee of Rebel. We actually recruited him. He was a raw talent, and just for the fun of it, uh, made the, a video for the Connecticut State of Tourism and, uh, sold it. It was probably one of his first five videos. He's just that talented. So, you know, the type of talent that we have working at Rebel is just, I'm proud to be able to say that, uh, it's, it's just deep and very diverse. And so in that, again, I go back to Bryn. Bryn is our CEO. He's a resident of Southington. He is somebody who believes in business. He believes in small business. I personally known Bryn for about twenty-one years. Uh, I, he hired him a few times when I was, uh, with MD in the corporate level and also at Staples. Then a couple of years ago, he said, hey, if you have a change, let me know. And in December of twenty seventeen, a change was made, and so I came on board Rebel with my experience in municipal government, with my experience, uh, in state government, and my experience also in economic development. I was an economic development chairperson, uh, you know, lucky us, uh, for the town of Brooklyn, uh, for five years, and also on the board, uh, for the eastern, sorry, northeastern region, uh, of Economic Alliance. So I understand the pickle that you're in, and, uh, we as a team are going to work very hard and looking forward to featuring all of the different and diverse businesses. Once I've had a lot of fun exploring, uh, long before this video, I had somebody bring me around, and I went to the mill and Crystal Bees. Uh, I actually walked around, uh, Ocherturf one time. I had a great time. So I'm really looking forward to getting deeper into this and bringing my team on board. And I'm open to any questions or any thoughts you may have.
That's great. Uh, if there's any questions that, uh, they would like to add? Even without the sound, I would like to be in, in that town. You know what I'm saying?
Madam Chair, yes?
Yes.
Madam Chair, Michael Del Santos. Hey, Greg, maybe you can send us a link to the video? Send it to either Lou or Marcella, and we can pass it along to the conference and go watch it. I don't mean...
Yeah, absolutely. Happy to do that.
Thank you so much. Uh, Lou, anything else?
Uh, that's it on the perspective.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. Welcome to, uh, to your new, uh, work here in Southington, Greg.
Thank you very much. We will work very hard and keep the privilege. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much. Is there anything else, Mike?
I do, Madam Chair. Uh, secondly, I'm delighted to say that work has begun at Eaton Corbin. Um, so there is some machinery that they're dropping off over there, and they're going to be in from Chapman Street, trying to get the, uh, the equipment off of Route Ten, which is going to be helpful as well. So we're going to see some work there over, uh, over the next, uh, little while, uh, since there is a lot of, uh, contamination that has to be, uh, cleaned up. And, uh, we're going to, you know, I'm just happy to say after so many years, we're going to start seeing some work over there. I don't know if Lou wanted to add anything with regards to that, Lou?
Thank you, sir. Uh, yes, um, we have a contract that's, uh, being signed. Jeremy Taylor did a great job, uh, working on that as well. Um, the whole team, the whole land use staff, as you know, have been working on this for over five years. You will see activity initially, some land clearing. Um, they'll go in in the first stage, then, uh, it'll be dormant for quite some time, and then they'll have to come back again for the second part of the remediation. So, you, you know, we want people to recognize that if it'll be cleared, you'll see some activity, and it's intentionally going to be stopped for at least, uh, forty-five days or so, and then they'll remobilize back to the site, uh, again, and just part of the, the three parties, four parties that are involved. You know, work.
I didn't know if I would ever see it cleaned up in, in, it's been a long, it's been a long time, a long time. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Lou.
Any, any questions on Eaton and Corbin before I move on? Uh, I just, uh, Lou and I spoke earlier today, and you wanted me to say, and I'm going to say it again, the trail will not be blocked. So the trail will have full access, so I just want everyone to know, because, you know, the rail's a trail, it's a track behind, so. Uh, my next agenda item was the, uh, discussed the, uh, public hearing from earlier tonight, the tax abatement from, uh, from the public hearing. Uh, I wanted to read into the record a memo that was sent on July thirteenth. Uh, the Economic Development Strike Committee, at a July ninth meeting, unanimously recommended the town council approve post-tax abatement outside the enterprise zone as attached. If you recall, the town previously approved this abatement, which expires with other tax abatements that had a sunset provision on June thirtieth. The tax abatement outside the enterprise zone is designated to assist and provide fairness and parity to manufacturers wanting to locate or expand within Southington, but chose for a variety of factors not to be within the targeted, uh, enterprise zone. The parameter for the town is equal to that of the enterprise zone, as the town portion is consistent. The abatement provides a five-year, forty percent tax abatement for both real and personal property new to the grant list for manufacturers within the standard industrial classification code, uh, code two thousand to three thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine inclusive. The program shall expire without further action of the town council on July first, two thousand twenty-two. All applicants applying before that date shall be eligible for the program. So once again, to throw it to Lou. Lou, do you have anything further to ask?
Uh, yes, sir. I'd like to add that we have an application currently from SignPro Manufacturing. Uh, if you recall, SignPro came from New Britain several years ago. They took advantage of the program.